All right, well, good evening, everyone. Today is May 9th, 2022, and I call this Chan-Hassan City Council meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. For the record, we have all of our council members present this evening. So our first action tonight is our agenda approval. Council members, are there any modifications to the agenda as printed? If not, we will proceed with the published agenda. The first item we have tonight are our public announcements, and we have two. The first one is to, I get the distinct honor of reading the proclamation because it is National Public Weeks, Works Week? That is a tongue twister. So I'd like to read the proclamation, and then I would invite our public works employees to come forward, and we'll say a few words, and then give you a round of applause and take a photo. But just want to read this proclamation before we say anything, unless you, gentlemen, want to stand up while I read the proclamation. I'm sure you're all really looking for that. So, all right. National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 15th through the 21st, 2022. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities into the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Chan-Hassan. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation, drinking water supply, wastewater collection, public buildings, parks, drainage, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Chan-Hassan to gain knowledge of and to maintain an interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community. And whereas the year 2022 makes, marks the 62nd Annual Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it now, resolved, I, Mayor of the city of Chan-Hassan, do hereby designate the week May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our community's health, safety, and quality of life. So congratulations to all of our public works employees. A quick round of applause. And so aside from all those fancy words and tongue twisters, on behalf of council, I would just like to say to those that are here tonight, and if you'll extend Charlie to your entire team, you know, how much we very much value and appreciate the hard work that you all do. Oftentimes, I think you guys are the unsung heroes of our community. You're behind the scenes, but you're also out there in our community, working hard, you know, day in and day out. Doesn't matter the weather. It's usually in the terrible weather that you guys are, you know, plowing streets and just working hard in our parks and on our structures and facilities. And we just really appreciate the, you know, the ongoing effort that you do each and every day and the services that you provide to our community. So I just want you to know that it doesn't go unnoticed, and it's something that we all very, very much value and appreciate, all of you. So thank you for what you do. We really appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, can I make one comment? APWA's National Public Works Week also includes parks maintenance. So it's Jerry's group, not just my group. I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that it's parks maintenance as well.
Yeah, okay.
And this year's motto is ready and resilient. So that's what we're going to be using this year.
Perfect. Well, we know they're ready and resilient, and I know the parks guys, I'm looking at a bunch of them out there. So Jerry, I apologize that I didn't acknowledge you as well. So thanks for the hard work and boots on the ground and everything that you do every day. Really appreciate it. So again, congratulations and thank you. And do you want to do a quick photo? All right.
Counsel, come down too, please.
All right, next on our, for our public announcements, we were planning on presenting a Maple Leaf Award to outgoing Planning Commissioner Stephen Week. He is not here, but I'm going to show everyone this lovely award, this Maple Leaf Award that he was going to get. So we're going to make sure that we get that to him. But I would still like to read the recognition that I was going to read for him tonight because he really has done so much for this community and is deserving of the recognition. He's not out there, is he? Okay. Stephen was appointed to the Planning Commission in 2013 and reappointed in 2016 and 2019. He served as Vice Chairman from April 2015 until being elected Chairman in April of 2019, serving as Chair until January 2022. Because of the respect Stephen garnered from the Commission and the way he managed the meetings, they continued to elect him Chairman annually. Stephen fostered an openness to the meetings and promoted an opportunity for greater participation and discussion. During his tenure, the Commission accomplished a number of long-range projects, including the update of the 61 corridor and the subsequent land use amendments, and the review and adoption of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Stephen has reviewed numerous development projects during his tenure, including single-family developments like Camden Ridge and the park, multi-family housing and senior living like the Venue in Lake Place, commercial and industrial developments, Dakota Retail, Halasik Business Park, and mixed-use development like Avienda. Stephen's unique perspective as a businessperson and longtime resident was an asset to the Planning Commission, and his passion for the community was evident in the decisions he made. So thank you to Stephen for his service. So if we could just give him a round of applause, even though he's not here. All right, I'll make sure we get that to him. Thank you. All right, next we have consent items. So tonight we have consent agenda items D1 through 14. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by City Council and will be recorded as a single motion based on staff recommendation. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Are there any items that the council would like to consider separately? If not, may I get a motion to approve consent to agenda items D1 through 14?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve items D1 through D14 on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Campion. All those in favor of approving consent agenda D1 through 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have visitor presentations. Visitor presentations are included with each of our regularly scheduled council meetings. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter that is not specifically on the agenda may step to the podium. Please provide your name and address for the record, and then please address the council. You will have five minutes to present your item. If your request includes an action item from staff or council, please complete a citizen action request form so that we may follow up with your request. However, if you are simply making a comment with no required action, a form does not need to be completed. Please know that we do not take up any of these items that are being brought forward tonight at our meeting this evening. And lastly, if you have any handouts that you would like to share with the council, please hand them to one of our staff members. We have one scheduled for this evening. Mr. Granos, please.
I have a PowerPoint that I was told I could bring up.
Mr. Granos, we've printed out copies of it, and if you align it with the document camera on the Maple Leaf, you can go through it that way.
That'll work. My name's Paul Granos. I live at 6663 Horseshoe Curve. Been on Lotus Lake for 12 years, been a Chan-Hassan resident since 1989, and I'm currently the president of the Lotus Lake Conservation Alliance.
I'm just going to turn your PowerPoint so you can see it on camera.
Oh.
Sorry.
You can stay up here with me?
I'm not sure if we can do that. We moved the camera a little bit, so that's not right.
Here we go.
There we go. All right.
Got it. All right, I have two requests for action tonight. The first one is on a goose management proposal that we'd like to make on behalf of Lotus Lake residents. And this is actual plan. We're going to skip this. We don't have the...
There's another document.
Here we go. You should have an electronic version of that in your packets.
It's like the geese are moving.
All right. All right, so I'm here on behalf of the LLC. Because of several complaints we had from residents on the lake about goose problems, feces on docks, rafts, lawns, beaches, and shoreline, we enabled a survey, monkey survey, to go out to all of our members and ask a couple of questions in February. It was a simple survey. First question was, do you think the number of geese on Lotus Lake are problematic? And number two, do you want the LLC to pursue some sort of action to correct that? We got over 100 respondents on that survey. This is the first question. I don't know if you can, how well you can see that. First question was, do you believe Canadian geese, the Canadian geese population on Lotus Lake is problematic? And out of 106 respondents, almost 69% felt that it was. Second question we asked is, do you believe the LLC should pursue some sort of population reduction method with the help of an outside contractor? And 67% almost believe that we should, out of 105 respondents. So armed with that, I'd like to give a little bit of background on the goose species. You can't, hmm, I'll have to read to you what's written out. These, these chapters aren't going to show. So there are some facts that make this an ongoing issue. The population in urban areas is exploding for Canadian geese. There are really no predators in an urban environment. The DNR has recognized this population growth and have extended seasons and bag limits for goose hunting. They have, each goose has a lifespan of 10 to 24 years. They begin reproducing at two years of age. Broods can rage from four to 11 Gosling offspring, and adults can produce two to three pounds of feces per day. And that feces is high in phosphorus content, which is the last thing we need more of in Lotus Lake. I think everyone knows that geese mate for life. That's probably a pretty well-known fact. Some other things about nesting is females often use the same site year after year in nesting. So they find a place, a neighborhood, and they stay with that. Typically, the hatches, the Goslings, will go back and nest in the same area where they were raised. So that pretty much tells you that the population is not going to decrease. Now, we as an organization are not looking to eliminate geese. We would just like a proactive approach to help control the population. Cities with goose control plans around us, Lakeville, Eden Prairie, Minnetonka, Burnsville, Golden Valley, Coon Rapids, Rochester, Christmas Lake has their own program to help limit the population. And any population control method that the LLC would embark on has to have the endorsement of the city before we get approval for a permit. So that's why we're here today. There are several methods to control goose populations. One is a treatment of the nest where the eggs are. It's too late in the season to do that, so our method would be a trapping and removal method. Again, that blocks that out. So we can't really see that picture very well, but this is the, one of the goose contractors actually does removal. They basically set up a netted area, they drive the geese into the netted area, they trap them, transport them according to current regulations and license requirements, and they hold them until they're processed and donated to a food shelf. Just as an FYI, relocation of geese is not an option. Nobody wants our geese. Our plan, which is done on a U.S. Fish and Wildlife permit template, has been submitted to the city, sorry about that, has been submitted to the city, and what we're asking you guys is to look at it and decide whether or not you will endorse it so we can pursue a permit to have a goose contractor come in sometime June and July, trap some geese, and remove them from the lake. The timing of that would be June or July. The cost estimate is around $3,000 for a lake of our size. Again, it's not a total population removal, it's just a mitigation issue, and that would be funded by the LLC, so we're not asking for any funding from the city to do that. Any questions on that part?
Any questions, council? All right, thank you.
The next one that I've got, if I can go ahead and continue...
Yes, please do.
I'm not here to talk about equipment issues on Lotus Lake and the wakes that they produced, which ought to be a relief to everybody here in this chamber. Not here to talk about the U of M study that talked about that issue. Everyone knows that the emotions have run pretty high on that issue on our lake in the last few years, and all I'm here today to do is trying to partner with the city to help provide some information to users of the lake to help mitigate some of those emotions. So the LLC has a pretty active social messaging effort, and we are going to be focusing not only on our own information, but also using the information that the marine industry publicizes to help with boating etiquette and recommendations for any tow activity on the lake, which would include water skiing, tubing, and wakeboarding. We have distributed our own pamphlets and literature to our membership. We've highlighted some of the things, some of the standards and recommendations that are already public and part of the Minnesota boating regulations and also Chan-Hassan statutes. And we've laminated these pamphlets. They're intended to stay in the boat, and hopefully users reference them on occasion to help with understanding what's out there as far as rules and regulations. Here is a picture of our current public access. Picture looking up toward the parking lot, a picture looking down toward the lake, and then some of the signage that we currently do have at the landing. This is a close-up of that signage, and right on there, we talk about no wake within 100 feet of shore. We talk about no wake 150 feet from shore for jet skis. The issue for us really is, does anybody understand what 100 feet on the water looks like? The watersports industry has some literature, and we are proposing to use that same messaging and an additional sign right at the launch, this is a rendering, obviously, to talk about what their own industry, what the wakeboarding industry recommends as far as responsible boating on the water. This lake, can't see that very well, everyone's pretty familiar with the shape of Lotus Lake, I think, we have a long and narrow lake, and we have some choke points where distances are hard to visualize. It's going to be a challenge for everybody to try and keep these distances while boating. And why are 100 feet and 150 feet and 200 feet important? Because that's the regulations and the statutes that are out there today. We want to partner with Chan-Hassan and help communicate those distances to all of our lake users. And we don't believe that the majority of users, myself included, can tell what 150 feet is when you're out on the water. You can publish whatever rule you want, but unless people can visualize what that distance is, I think it's kind of a moot point. And if you're out on Lotus during the weekend, during the summer, you can witness that all day long. So we have a couple of proposals. In addition to that additional signing down at the landing about the WSIA, the Watersports Industry Association, we would recommend that we do some visual markers along the drive that talk about 50 feet from shore. This is what 100 feet from shore looks like. So when they get on the water, they have an idea of what that really looks like. If these type of signs are not usable or doable, then you could also paint those same measurement markers on the drive pavement itself. So in closing, I would like to partner with Chan-Hassan and help communicate some of the rules and regulations that are already out there, not changing anything, just communicating what's out there and helping people to visualize what those distances are when they're on the water. We'd like to do that as soon as possible, obviously, the boating season arrived, it looks like today. So, you know, I don't know what the cost is. We threw out a number of maybe $2,000 for a sign and some painting on the, on the drive. So any questions on any of that?
Council, any questions?
Do you want me to keep these here? I'll...
We have feces.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Are there any other visitor presentations tonight?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Would you be able to speak on the items that are specifically on the agenda at that time?
Only for the public hearings.
Then may I speak?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name's Larry Cook. I live at 471 Big Horn Drive in Chan-Hassan. Most of you know me, except for, I believe, Hookington and Schubert probably don't know me, but I've been here before, so hopefully the other council members won't cast too many aspersions on me. But I'd like to address what's going to come up later in, on this, and I tried to, and I sent an email, and I apologize because of, well, I'm really misorientated here. An email earlier today, and because of the weekend, not being able to compose a response having to do with a proposed change on the ordinance having to do with boats. So in the interest of being succinct, if you don't mind, I'm going to basically read through eight points.
Sure.
So not to take up too much of your time, but there is more detail in the email, and I will also provide a copy for the...
And just so you know, we did receive it, and it has been distributed for council, but you still may go through your points.
Okay, very good.
But we did receive it and have read it, so...
Okay, thank you very much. So basically, my position is that there should be no change to the current ordinance having to do with boats in driveways. Boats and trailers should not be allowed to be stored in driveways. This current ordinance prohibiting boats in driveways, as I understand it, has been in effect for roughly 50 years, since 1972, I believe it was. There is no compelling reason to change the ordinance as proposed. There are, however, multiple reasons not to change it. And one of the biggest reasons has to be, is that we now have 50 years where homeowners have relied on this ordinance in making their determination of when and where to buy homes. And as everybody knows, first of all, the first decision you make, what do I want in a home? And once I can find what I want in a home, my decision is going to be aesthetics. If I have a location that is more appealing to me than another, generally, if the other requirements are met, I'm going to be looking at the one that's most appealing. My point is that 50 years ago, the council got it right. 50 years ago, the council at that time understood that aesthetics are important to the growth and vitality of the community. Similar to banning boats in driveways, we don't allow long-term dumpsters, we don't allow non-working cars, all because of the aesthetics. But there are other reasons why we shouldn't be allowing boats in the driveways. I don't think anybody can rationally disagree that going down a street without boats sitting in the driveway is, or with boats sitting in driveway is not as appealing as a street that doesn't have any boats. I don't think any rational person would conclude otherwise. Chan-Hassan's formula of allowing boats to be stored on the side yard or in the rear yard has been successful for 50 years. It has served its purpose, and we need to keep that formula to have boats stored side yards, rear yards, not in the driveways. Developers know the value of aesthetics. That's why most associations that have been created, where they have homeowner associations, do not allow items to be parked in driveways other than vehicles. And so they know the value, they know what it takes to bring customers, clients, to a location and sell those homes, and so that people want to buy their types of homes. The, this issue should be rejected because of also new facts since in the 50 years. 50 years ago, boats weren't very big, and most of you will recognize. If you had a fishing boat at 16 feet, you had a very large boat. When I bought my boat, it was 18 feet, and it was huge at that time. Now, I think everybody knows, we have boats, you know, that are 26, 30 feet, that's length, and the width gets to almost the maximum of 10 feet. So now we have even more reason to keep them out of driveways.
About one minute, please.
Okay. Biggest reason to keep them out of the driveways now is because they are going to be monsters. Nobody wants to sit there and look across the street or look down their street and see these monsters sitting there. So we have more reasons to limit them than before. So we should maintain the current, current ordinance, and if anything, if you want to make a decision on this, this should go to the public with a better and broader request for the public's input. Sending out emails to people, et cetera, just doesn't work. I mean, if I had my choice, it should go to a vote and let the people decide because they have relied on this ordinance for 50 years. So I ask you not to take any action to approve this change of ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who should I give these for the record?
Thank you. Any other visitor presentations? All right, next up, we have our first public hearing. Oh, pardon me. Okay. I saw movement and heard voice, so I didn't know if I was missing something, so I apologize, but please proceed.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I will be discussing the request from Lifetime Fitness for on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll put the proposed motion on the screen at the end. The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license. I don't have a PowerPoint.
The city has received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license with Sunday sales from Lifetime Fitness located at 2901 Corporate Place. Some background, on November 28th, 2016, the Chan Hassen City Council approved a request from Lifetime Fitness for an on-sale beer and wine license. The license premises was restricted to the Life Cafe and adjacent bar and to the Pool Bistro and outdoor pool. There are attached floor plans in your packet which show the locations of where the beer and wine was licensed. Lifetime has renewed this license annually and has not incurred any liquor law violations or had any license rejections or revocations during its tenure. Lifetime Fitness would now like to serve on-sale intoxicating liquor in their Chan Hassen facility, which requires a submittal of a new liquor license application. Staff reviewed the application and determined that the applicant has complied with all state and city requirements for on-sale intoxicating liquor license. The building locations where the alcohol will be sold and consumed have not changed from the previously approved on-sale beer and wine license, which again are the Life Cafe and adjoining bar and Pool Bistro and outdoor area. A public hearing notice was published in the Chan Hassen Villager and sent to all property owners within 500 feet of the site. As of today, staff has not received any comments or questions from the public. Just to touch on fees, fees for on-sale intoxicating liquor license are based on square footage of the licensed premises. The floor area of the Lifetime Fitness is over 6,000 square feet, which requires an annual license fee of $13,304 according to the city's 2022 fee schedule. And this includes a $200 Sunday sales fee. So that's really it. With that, I'll open it up for any questions and I will throw the proposed motion on the screen.
Perfect. First, before I open the public hearing, are there any questions for Mr. Unmatt? No questions? Alright, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Nobody coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing and return it to council for any further questions, comments, or motion. Go ahead, Councilwoman Schubert.
I will make the motion that the Chan Hassen City Council approves an on-sale intoxicating liquor license with Sunday sales for Lifetime Fitness Club Operations Company Incorporated, DBA, oh, DBA Lifetime Fitness located at 2901 Corporate Place.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, our next public hearing, hearing for this evening is the 2022 pavement rehab project, Mr. Bender. I was going to say Howley, but I saw Mr. Bender moving fast, so...
Alrighty, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to introduce and present on the 2022 city pavement rehabilitation project, project number 2201. For tonight's actions, we'll be hosting the second public hearing for the project, which is related to assessments. The council can accept the bids and if they decide so, choose to award the contract to GMH Asphalt, which was the low bidder, and adopt the final assessment role. I just wanted to have this map in here primarily to kind of show the three individual project areas that we have, the biggest one being the Long Acres area. And adjacent to that, east of Galpin, the Woodmill Run area, and to the south along Galpin, the East Stone Creek area. I've already presented previously a few times on what's included in the project, so in the essence of time, I thought I'd skip over that. This is just a summary of the public engagement that's occurred with the project to date. In 2021, when the project was initiated, initially, we sent out a postcard invitation to, to an open house that we hosted on December 15th. We also placed yard signs with a QR code to try to drive people to our project to, through our website. You know, in addition, we, we also have a project webpage that we keep updated and we distributed a resident survey to elicit feedback and information from property owners. In 2022, we sent a letter to the Stone Creek and Timberwood neighborhoods about a proposed part of the project that is not included in the project. We also did a notification letter regarding the, which indicated the preliminary assessment amount based on the feasibility study and the public hearing associated with approving the feasibility study. Then we sent another letter which, after design, which indicated the, in bidding, which indicated the final assessment amount and included an invitation to another open house, which was hosted on May 3rd. And then there's also tonight's public hearing to engage public... Here are our bid results. Looking at the base bid, they're within about $400,000, 423, or 13 actually, and, which is under 10% of the total amount. Staff feels these were good bids as well as the consulting engineer. We also feel that the, the amounts associated with the bid alternate, which is a storm, storm pond cleanout in the Stone Creek area represents a fair value. So the total bid amount with alternate one would be 4.65 million. One note is it is over engineer's estimate, but it is under budget overall. The costs in the, you know, which I believe everybody's kind of aware of in the construction field are rapidly escalating and that's the primary reason that we feel that the engineering estimate ended up under the base bid amount. This is a summary of the budget, which was 5.2 million, showing the base bid costs of 4.5 million. And then we also have a column that's showing, you know, with engineering and soft costs that we're at 4.9 million, which is under budget. Note that the storm pond cleanout that was bid with the alternate is not included in this table. That's additional work that was designed by the project to see what kind of costs we could get. Water Resources has looked at this and, and, you know, in general, we feel that although it would reduce the budget and scope of the 2023 stormwater project, it has good synergy with this project and we recommend it be included. Next slide is the assessment summary, which shows the preliminary assessment amount for the areas. Then the final assessment amount is also included for the three areas and it shows the change in the percent increase. We do feel that the Brinker area was most impacted by the cost increases, simply do it to be in the smallest area, so it's more sensitive to the, the change in increases because there's just not the volume of work in that specific area. Please keep in mind that these assessment amounts are specific to each individual area per the city's assessment policy. I've kind of went over the rapid escalation in construction costs and the, you know, the, when we do feasibility, you know, we always are refining the quantities and the actual need as we get into the final design. And then the last thing I want to say is, you know, typically with an FDR project, which all three of these are, and that stands for full depth reclamation for the bituminous pavement technique. Typically, we see that they fall into a range of $3,000 to $5,000, so that these final assessment amounts with the Brinker area being the lowest actually is under that range, but the Long Acres and Stone Creek areas are near the low end of the range, so that we, you know, we see is very favorable for the project. The proposed schedule, tonight, we're here for the public hearing and consideration to award the contract. If the project's awarded, it would start in May, be substantially complete November, you know, before the winter, and then we come back and do some restoration and punchless work in spring of '23. A pre-construction meeting has already been scheduled with the assumption that the project would be approved and we would host that meeting if it is. At that time, the contractor would present details to us of their preliminary project schedule, which would also include which area they plan to, to begin in, of which we don't know right now. It's been the, of the questions that have taken over the last week, that has been the most common question. So, we do expect the contractor want to get going quickly. They requested the meeting be scheduled in advance of this council meeting, you know, in the hopes that it'd be awarded. One change that we wanted to point out regarding construction services between last year's project and this year's project was that when the project was, and RFP was distributed and proposal accepted, construction administration inspection services were included in it. City staff performed these services in 2021. The costs that were presented in the previous table from a budgetary perspective included these engineering costs. We did this to support the, the city's strategic priorities of operational excellence and communication. Staff determined to, decided to use the consultant for this to support an increased responsive, responsiveness to our residents and the contractor and, and also to preserve staff's ability to manage the 2020, 2003 Lake Lucy Rehabilitation Project, of which our construction manager will be the full-time inspector. Coming to the recommendation, you know, this project was determined to be feasible, it's cost-effective and within the overall budget. We would, there were certain funds that were a little over budget, staff would strive to control these costs relative to the individual enterprise funds, the water and storm funds specifically. We've already spoken to Public Works, specifically the utility department, to identify some work that they could self-perform. I do want to point out that as we were going through the feasibility and design, this is specific to our utility staff monitoring and inspecting curb boxes at individual properties. That was something that is new this year that we haven't done in the past and the budget was set before that decision was made, so there is some extra work in there that wasn't anticipated, but we feel that this will provide a better surface. This is the right time to actually do that type of work with these projects, so it's just another thing that we've identified that we want to do in the future to deliver a better project. So overall, staff recommends the city council accept the bids, adopt the final assessment role and award a contract to GMH Contract, Asphalt, which is the low bid contractor. So at this time, I'd open, be open to questions.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Bender. Council, any questions? I just have a couple. In terms of feedback from your open houses, I know early on, there were some changes after the feedbacks and positive changes for the neighborhood. Any other outstanding issues or questions coming from the open house and how was the attendance?
The first open house that we had was a lot more well-attended than the second one, at our second one, we had seven or eight people come. It, it almost implied that people were kind of comfortable with the project, I wouldn't say that that's 100%. We've gotten a few questions, including, you know, some that have reached out directly to you that, you know, wanted to see a little different something done with the project on a particular street. At the same time, you know, we've responded to those and, and, you know, feel that we're able to, to address all the, the questions that the public has had, even though, you know, there's not everybody 100% agrees with the determination.
Okay. And then, I think this was one of the questions and maybe an email we got in terms of choosing a vendor. So I know that, you know, you take the low bidder, but we always make sure that the low bidder still, the work that they perform is either, you know, they've done work in the past in the city or we, you know, kind of do reference checks to make sure that, you know, they're going to perform the quality of work that we're expecting. I just want to address that publicly.
Yep, we have worked with GMH Asphalt, which is a low bidder in the past. GMH has successfully performed the Minnewashda Manor project, which is our 1701 project on the north side of Lake Minnewashda in the Tannagers Lane area. They also performed our 1802 project, which was Lake Drive East. Both projects were done according to our project specifications. The Lake Drive East was a challenging area with Starbucks and McDonald's there and, and some of that was difficult construction and, and, you know, that challenge showed. But at the same time, we feel that GMH can perform this work and, you know, would not recommend going away from the low bidder.
Perfect. Very impressive with the numbers as well and the projects, well done. And then two more questions for you. In terms of the point person, I think it's a great idea, or I'm calling it the point person, is that essentially what the consultant is for that project, is the point person for residents, kind of the go-between?
Yes.
If questions come up, construction time, closed roads, that type of thing, that will be the person that residents will be able to communicate with?
Yeah, we will direct to them to the first, the residents still always have the option if they go to our website and see mine or Matt's name on it, to contact us. Some of whom, or a fair amount of them already have my contact information, they'll just go straight to what they already have and we'll, you know, still be overseeing the project. And, you know, I'll be going to like all the weekly meetings as well, Matt will, Matt will check on the project certainly on a daily basis and be responsive in there to answer questions from the consultant, but at the same time, you know, with three separate project areas and other things that we want Matt to be able to oversee around town, it's very challenging to do this amount of work and be there, you know, when the contractor needs us or a resident, you know, has a difficult situation that they want somebody there right now, so...
Great, thank you. I think it's a great idea, I just wanted to call it out because I know, you know, when roads start closing or there's weather delays or what, that's when all the questions start coming and it's nice to have and you guys have always done a great job, but just to make sure that we're, all the bases are covered, so I think it's a great idea, just wanted to confirm. And then my last question, this really isn't a trick question for you, but you, you say, even though that it's over the estimate, it's still under budget, if you can just explain what that means, that would be helpful, please.
Yep, I'm going to go back to the budgetary slide. So, looking at the PMP fund, you know, we estimated 4 million and, you know, it came in just over 3 million with engineering, you know, it's at 3.2 million, so there's, you know, a delta of about $800,000 there. But then you look at the storm costs and you look at the, the surface war storm and you look at the budget versus the bid cost and you see 200,000 difference there. And the same with the water being about 150 over, you know... I can really, like I tried to explain the water one where there's some additional work in there, the storm one, we're just returning, we're trying to dial in the amount of work that is going to be associated with these projects, with what we're trying to do these days with getting more, some structures and to decrease maintenance costs into the future. They're expensive, we know this, but yet they're valuable, they pay off over time. So we're just dialing in our, our budgetary percentages when we create these budgets in the first place.
Perfect, thank, and I, the reason why I asked, I think it's just an important piece to point out because, you know, residents might see their piece go up, you know, from what it was initially bid and, and we still talk about being under budget, but they just see the numbers, so I just want to, I just wanted to point out there, ask you to, to clarify that, so I appreciate it.
I, I'd add that the way that this works out from a budgetary perspective, actually, per our assessment policy, works out well for the residents because the one item that is under is related to the street and the assessment amount is 40% of the street costs.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, appreciate it. Alright, well, I know we have to next open the public hearing unless there's any follow-up questions, alright. I hereby open the public hearing. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. All right, I will close the public hearing. And return it to counsel for any final questions or a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Councilman Campion.
I move that the Chan Hessen City Council adopts a resolution accepting the bids and awarding the contract and adopts a resolution adopting the assessment role for the two thousand and twenty-two city pavement rehabilitation project.
Thank you, Councilman Campion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman McDonald. We have a valid motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, and our last public hearing for the evening, before we move to general business, is Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This item, the Earhart case, appeared before the planning commission on April nineteenth. So before each night is actually three action items. One is requesting a vacation of a permanent easement for public roadway and drainage utility. We're amending the rezoning from agricultural district to A two to single-family RSF. And then we're amending a subdivision with a variance. This site is just north of ninety-six off of one oh one, Great Plains Boulevard. The property, as I mentioned, is A two and has a density that meets the single-family requirements. There's a large wetland on the site, which you have seen some of the approvals for the work done around that. So the public roadway vacation that will, you open later in your, this presentation, is down in this area here on West Ninety-sixth Street. And I'll go through that in a little bit more detail here. And I'll turn this part over to the city engineer if you want to address the vacation.
Sure, thank you, Kate. Mayor, counsel, there's an existing basically access easement on the property that was needed to get some turnaround movement because there wasn't a proper cul-de-sac at the end of West Ninety-sixth Street. This is a, an easement that's on the subject property. And when the plat eventually goes through, the road is going to go through there. So the purpose of this easement is not needed in any way, shape or form. So as a matter of cleanup, this is really just cleaning up recorded documents. We would like to vacate this easement and it would be contingent on the final plat ultimately being approved, which is down the line. So it's really just kind of process.
So the second part of this is rezoning, as I mentioned, that one lot would be adding to the plat itself. So again, it's being consistent with the rest of that, being resolved to agricultural to RSF. As you know, most of those lots on Ninety-sixth Street are agricultural zone and have horses and the like.
So as indicated by the city engineer just explaining, so this is kind of that lot they picked up and then where the vacation is taking place. But this lot will clear, clean up the plat itself by adding that too. So the creating the one lot and then giving access to Eagle Ridge and extending the sewer and water as a part of this project. So again, here's a more clear picture where that additional property is coming in, just over one acre of land. So the other issue with this is tree preservation. So the the tree preservation in this area is based on the lot and size. I think it's probably a little bit more illustrative if I go to the next slide to kind of explain. They're requesting some variances to the replacement. So what we agreed to, based on that, there's still plenty of the same number of trees, but we agreed to it based on the fact that it's recreated a wooded wooded area. The size and diversity is more in characteristic of the native tree stand in the area, so less transplant shock. So if you go back to where, you know, we said they have to have a hundred and twenty-four as certain caliper and then the bald and burlap a hundred and ten. So we've identified those and all those then would be carried forward when they come from final plat in the conditions of approval. So we're just showing to you, getting relief from the the standards there, but we think it's consistent based on the variance criteria that we put in place there. So unless anybody had questions on that.
Could you say that one more time? I didn't.
Yeah, so so they're asking for relief because we're at, we're letting them do some smaller onsite transplants. So we want to be specific about how those occur. And so that we, they put together a revised schedule, how they'd make that happen. So the findings that we put in place there state that, we agree to that, that the caliper reduction, based on the fact that they're recreating a wooded area, so there won't be so much transplant shock, they're using some of the trees in the area that are that caliper or larger that would meet that criteria. So they're not getting relief from any of the number of trees. It's just the caliper size and using some stock that's already available.
On the site already?
Correct. I'll let Charlie speak to this.
Mayor, counsel, when when the preliminary plat was in front of you at the time, it wasn't resolved that the through collector road, which is shown in purple, which eventually will go all the way through to Powers, was going to go this route and then over or this route, which is the staff preference. With this revised preliminary plat, it's been determined and the developers proposing that the through collector road would follow the purple route, which is a a good thing for the city. But at the last preliminary plat, it was still yet to be determined in the future build-out of this property because this is all ghost plat west of this subdivision, you know, what would ultimately be the through road. So the point of this slide is that we're kind, we've, we've taken, we've advanced the ball on on solving that question, which is a good thing.
Or as a planner would say, good doing, good planning, thinking ahead, how we're going to make that connection. So someone else buying in that area knows that that road is going to be connected through and how it's going to be connected.
And so does that other road not, that won't be there at all? It'll just be the one road through or?
No, that will be a road, but it will just be a regular neighborhood road.
Connecting road.
Not the, not the.
The collector road, okay.
This slide is just meant to show, again, no real changes to the to the previous preliminary plat, again, other than the reconfiguration of these lots down here because of that added property. And we wanted to bring up that this revision also shows that we're going to extend this trail further north to connect to an existing trail just off the screen here, which is a good thing. There's a sidewalk there now, but to connect our trail network, we would have had like this kind of remnant piece of sidewalk. So we'd have trail, sidewalk, trail. So the point of this is to say that the developer has agreed to replace that kind of remnant sidewalk with trail, which is a good thing. And that that was the point of this slide. So this trail will ultimately follow the collector alignment all the way through to Powers.
The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this. Again, the goal of this amended project is really to make the project better, kind of and clean it up. And so we think we've accomplished that. The planning commission did hold a public hearing, as I mentioned, on the on the nineteenth of April. They voted six to zero to recommend approval development with the variances as requested, as we stated there. So the next step for you to do is hold, the city council would hold the public hearing for the vacation of the permanent easement and for the public roadway. That is why this project is before you under public hearing tonight for the drainage and utility. So so I would request that you open the public hearing and then we'll go have motions set for you after that.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions before I open the public hearing? I do have one question. I'm sorry, just for clarification before. So could you go back a couple of slides? It's just where at the corner of slide. Right there. So on the two additional lots, eighteen and nineteen, so those got added from the last time we?
Yeah, I think it's kind of more illustrative if we go back to this one. You can kind of see how they reshaped. It's really just the added, yeah. It made all the lots, even sixteen and seventeen, better.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
And then, so I know the rest of, south of that area is all R two. Does that, right?
Agricultural, A two.
Agricultural, A two. So does that then all stay A two?
Yes. So I think.
How do those two additions affect that little corner down there?
I'm going to go back to the street one. I went past it, Charlie, the one that showed the overall street. I think those are the cleanup things when we resolve this issue. I think making this turnout, because I think if you recall at the original public hearings, there was a lot of concerns from Ninety-sixth Street, all the traffic going through. So will there be some traffic that goes that way? There might be some construction traffic going that way. But the goal is ultimately with the build-out, we've we've created that access as a minor collector going out to Powers Boulevard. So this, we believe.
But is it next to our the the new lots? Are they next to residential or is that just a pond then?
You're talking about this area here?
Right.
Yeah.
And maybe we can look more at the final plat. I'm just trying to understand the, kind of the impact of all the grading that's going to go on down there.
The pond is to the north. This is where the pond is here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so these lots on Ninety-sixth Street will remain unchanged. No rezonings, no smaller, bigger lots. It's that very last one in the north that the developer, we didn't say go buy that lot. They chose to go do that to help with some of their planning for the road and the lot layout and the stormwater pond. So they went out and got that additional lot, which is the whole reason why we're here tonight is because they added that additional property into the preliminary plat. So they're, they reconfigured all of these lots just in the corner to make everything work and in our opinion, work better. But it has no material change to Ninety-sixth Street. The same impacts to Ninety-sixth as in the old plan are the same in this plan, other than I would say maybe some improvements to the collector road being known going through here as opposed to up there.
So it does provide them?
Better layout. That was their goal.
Provide the developer a better layout.
Correct. Yeah, a better layout on the on the on the frontage road and the stormwater pond and the like. So so it was a benefit. The property owner was willing to sell, so it makes a better subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go back to the public hearing part.
All right, I hereby open the public hearing. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please. All right, I will close the public hearing and return it to counsel. Do you have any other?
Nope.
And so next steps are coming back to us for the final.
Yeah, I will go through that after. I can go through that now.
Oh, you're going to go through that after.
Yeah, if you want to make a motion, I can skip to that.
Why don't we just go so we kind of know what's next and then we can go back to the motion, please?
You'll come back with the final plat. There's some, a few issues that are still being worked through. The goal with the preliminary plat is to create for them all the conditions that they have to show in the development contract, which will be produced with the final plat. And there's a couple of other issues that are being worked on. So plans and specifications will also be there. And then the resolution formally removing this property from the Royal Service District, which is a taxing. So all that will be executed when it comes back for final plat. Typically, we put those on consent if everybody's in agreement, but you will see it again and have an opportunity to vote on it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So this step then would then be the continuation of the changes to the preliminary plat. And so there's a couple of motions here. You can make it all in one. And that's approving the resolution, resolution for the vacation, approving the ordinance, rezoning the property, approving the amendments, amendment to the preliminary plat as stated in the plan, and then adopting the planning commission findings of fact.
Okay. And Jill took a look at all the trees and confirmed everything as well?
She had the numerous discussions with the developer.
Okay, perfect. All right. All right, if there aren't any questions, if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Councilwoman Ream?
The Chan Hessen City Council adopts a resolution approving the vacation of the grant of permanent easement for public roadway drainage and utility purposes dated September second, two thousand and nine and recorded with the Carver County Recorder's Office as document number A five zero nine one 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 on October thirteenth, two thousand and nine, and approves an amendment to the preliminary plat with a variance to the tree replacement requirement subject to the conditions of the planning commission staff report dated April ninth, two thousand, or two thousand and twenty-two, and adopts the ordinance rezoning the development from agricultural estate district A two to single-family residential RSF district to include the additional parcel and adopts the planning commission's findings of fact and recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ream. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert. We have a valid motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to general business and for location at Pleasantview Road.
Yes, I have that, yes. So this is the Cunningham second addition. This item also appeared at the planning commission on April nineteenth. They're requesting subdividing approval with a variance for a private street and a neck lot with two single-family residences on the property. This is the property located, again, eight fifty-five Pleasantview. The property, there's a single-family home via the driveway, so there'll be a second home. The property is serviced by public sewer and water. So the private drive will then serve the two additional homes. Again, a private drive does require a variance. Based on the the size of the lots, we exceed the city ordinance and we felt that the best way to service this would then be use of the private drive because this is, again, when we have a collector's street, we try to limit the access points. So again, they'll have to install a new water hydrant and then provide for stormwater treatment. And that, I think, was the the biggest issue working through Watershed District and providing for drainage. And I'll turn that, I think it was, actually Joe did a pretty good job explaining this to the planning commission.
Mayor, counsel, yes. So the plans are, the final plans are still under development. They're still working with the Watershed District. They're still working with our water resources engineer to finalize the stormwater management on the site. We think we can get there. There's no big red flags. It's it's just the proximity of this development, based on it being up on Hill and there's an existing development lower for all those drains to. We're very sensitive and cognizant of not negatively impacting the downstream. So that's, that's why this became kind of a talking point, if you will. But again, we're talking with the developer and they're working, their engineers working with us and Watershed District and we'll get there with the final approval.
So I'm not going to go through, this is the very detailed part of that, which is also included in your staff report. So the tree removal, again, the tree preservation fencing must be installed prior to grading. So there's, they're following the our tree canopy regulations, so there isn't any problems there. You do, the planning commission did support the variance for the private street, again, the three lots off of a private street and the neck lot configuration. So the, because the planning commission held the public hearings to review development, they voted six zero. They also supported the private street and there were no issues. The one neighbor came forward, was across the street, who has a, there's just an anomaly of some right-of-way that falls across a property line. The right-of-way is the right-of-way. Nobody can use it. It's in the right-of-way. So that's been clarified. The developer has acknowledged that. And so with that, unless you had any questions, I have a motion for you.
Counsel, any questions? I don't have any questions, just clarification. So at one point you said three lots. Is it the outlot or the?
There's one lot, there's one home there and they're creating two more.
Can you show where the other two homes are?
Yeah.
Please?
It's hard to see on the, let's see.
I'm trying to picture it. I mean, I drive by it all the time, but I'm just trying to picture it.
Yeah, this one. Yeah. There's one, two, three. So they're kind of, because it's a long, deep lot.
This one's existing, right?
Yeah.
And then these are the two.
Yeah.
Those are the two.
Yeah. So if you look at the first slide, I'm sorry. Existing, then you've got the, it's long shaped here. So it's kind of a funny shape. This is that right-of-way piece that's a no man's land, so it's part of the right-of-way.
And this is a great, that's a great slide just to show, I mean, I know you're going to work and I, I know you'll work closely with the watershed, but obviously that's the biggest concern because isn't that cul-de-sac one of those challenging cul-de-sacs with drainage? Or am I thinking of the wrong Foxpath cul-de-sac?
You're thinking of the wrong.
Okay. Because all of a sudden, my heart started racing when I was thinking of the drainage and wanting to make sure. And I know that, I mean, just from the detail, obviously, with engineering and watershed to make sure that, I mean, that is a very steep grades in there, and there's houses right in the back. So I just want to emphasize the concern over that, and obviously, we'll do our due diligence to manage that, but it's a little-
And this is historic piece of property. All the lots meet the, in excess of minimum requirements. Nothing's jammed in there, so I just, yeah, it's-
Yeah, it's a beautiful piece of property. I'm just thinking of the people downstream, literally down the hill, and so that was my, I just wanted to-
As was the watershed district, we've been looking at that too. So that, they're kind of solving a longstanding problem, but they're taking that on themselves.
Right. Yeah, that's great. That's true. Okay.
So with that, I was up to motion. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, or the city engineer would.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion that the Chan Hessen City Council approves the preliminary plat, creating two lots with variances for the use of a private street and a neck lot subject to the conditions of approval, and adapts the Planning Commission finding of facts.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Campion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five zero. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next we have our second item under general business, and it has to do with the regulation of outdoor storage of watercraft on residential properties.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, just kind of gave you a brief overview. The Planning Commission did hear this too. There was two folks in attendance on that, and so I think we tried to kind of identify the, where we were. The issue was depending on city code to permit seasonal storage, the problem existing ordinance of watercraft, you know, on the side rear. So, you know, we kind of, kind of went through all of the iterations of allowing one watercraft between April and October 1st, seeing to be some consensus on that. And then the rational basis for kind of moving in that direction was a lot of cities permit the use of storage watercrafts in neighborhoods. And again, each HOA would have their own rules, so they would supersede any city rules. But the goal then was to allow boats between April 1st and October 1st in the driveway, and that would be the one watercraft. And the definition of watercraft could be sailboat, pontoon, as long as it stayed in the driveway portion. So, you know, we add a definition, so that we would match the definition of watercraft as I just mentioned. It's more than one, so it would be something on a trailer. We'd exempt watercraft trailers associated with, the exempt watercraft trailers associated would be prohibited during, from prohibition on driveways between April 1st and October 1st. I'm not sure that's what we meant to say, but they would be permitted between those times. We also limit the number of watercraft trailers associated with watercraft, which may be present on the driveways, to one. So you can only have one. So you couldn't have a flotilla or the like. So the prohibition items on stored driveways from crossing into the public right-of-way. That's always been an issue that would still continue to be if you're crossing over a trail, a sidewalk, or hanging out into the street. So that, nothing's changed on the exhibits or where we put it. You can't store it in your front yard. It would have to be on the driveway. It'd have to be in this, would have to be in your driveway. Can't store it in your front yard, even if, so if this is your driveway, couldn't be here, couldn't be here. So again, that was similar to what was proposed in the last iteration. So at the public hearing, as I mentioned, there was two residents that did speak, just kind of summarized at the Planning Commission, kind of that they voted five to one to recommend approval. And then they questioned why, you know, watercraft was being treated differently, that you could see some of those came in in the comments. So kind of just a summary of what the Planning Commission, again, kind of a divided issue. So we did do some public outreach, so the proposed code amendment, because it's a high visible change. It was put in the Villager twice in advance of both public hearings and the council meetings tonight. I know it was placed out on the mayor's message, and, yeah, we did try to communicate that. And again, we placed it out on the city's website, so we tried to gather as much information as, and I would say it's probably pretty consistent from what we gathered last time. I mean, the total volume. So with that, we kind of summarized the feedback. I know you heard some tonight. That came in after we kind of put ours together, but that gentleman spoke, but there was forty-seven comments received prior to three o'clock when we put this together. So you can kind of just read there, twenty-three expressed opposition, twenty-three expressed support, four indicated they would like RVs. So again, the most common themes, which you're probably aware of, aesthetics, burden some off-site storage, safety crimes, sightlines, unfair to boats, single boats, single upboats, and parking and other concerns of enforcement. So those were kind of the mainstays. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or we do have a motion prepared too, so.
All right. Are there any questions before I open it to conversation?
Councilwoman Campion? One question from Ms. Annison. On the allowance of one watercraft trailer, and then it says one watercraft, I thought it was discussed that, you know, for like jet skis, because oftentimes I see, you know, two jet skis would be on one watercraft trailer.
Yeah, I think that'd be, yeah, one trailer. I think, I think that would be clarified in the definition, yes.
Okay, so that's what's intended is?
Yep.
Okay.
The exact language, Mayor and council talks about one trailer and the associated watercraft.
Okay.
So we did address that.
Got it.
Any other questions?
So I know the public right-of-way was addressed, but I remember when we talked about this last year, we also talked about sightlines, and it can't impede like road and sightlines, is that-
That would still be consistent.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? All right, before I open it up for discussion, I just, you know, we got some questions back in public comments, which council read, and by the way, we, you know, we received the forty-seven comments. I know individually, we received a number, so really appreciate, you know, I mean, forty-seven of a huge community, I know, is not, is totally representative, but appreciate people that took the time to reach out and provide counsel with feedback, or always appreciate that process. But I did want to just explain, because I did receive questions about how this is back after we just discussed it a year ago, and I just want to explain the process for council, because we get, you know, visitor presentations, we get things coming back. And so I just want to be clear about the council's process, because consistency is important when facing all different things that come before council. So yes, this came before us a year ago. It didn't move forward. The process that we have as a council is on a quarterly basis. We take, council members can bring forward items to roundtables. And at that time, the council member explains, you know, what they want to discuss, if they want to move it, you know, why this is important, whether it was from a visitor presentation or initiative that they want to have the council look at. In order for it to move forward from the roundtable, there has to be a majority vote amongst council members to move it forward. So it can't just be one person controlling the agenda. It has to be majority. And so this issue, or not this issue, but this ordinance wanted revisiting by a council member. It had the support of three council members, and then it, so that's why it came back. So I just, I think it's important for, for people to understand what happens behind the scenes. It's not people trying to shuffle the deck to try to get their initiatives moved forward or whatnot. This is, it had the support of the majority of the council members, which is three, to bring it back, to have it reconsidered by a planning commission and a, and council. So that is why it's back again, and I just, we do that with all initiatives that are brought forward in our work session, and I just think it's important for, for residents to understand the process that happens in our work sessions, to be, to be very clear and consistent. With that, I would open it up for conversation, and Ms. Councilwoman Ream, if you want to lead the way, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So last year, I wasn't wholly satisfied with the proposed ordinance. I thought it was too broad, and I received a lot of feedback from people, talked to a number of residents and people about it. And I had wanted to revisit this whole ordinance, but have it narrowed down to boats only. And I am really appreciative of the Planning Commission for going through the process a couple of times, because I think, you know, getting the emails and hearing the feedback from residents and having the Planning Commission work through all these issues really, I think, is helpful for those of us on the council, and I appreciate that. I don't own a boat. I don't plan to own a boat. But I do think, living in Minnesota with all the lakes we have, and living in the city of Chan Hessen with our beautiful lakes, I don't want to prevent people from being able to go on a boat ride someday. You know, if they wake up and the weather's beautiful and they have their boat on the driveway and they're able to take it for, you know, spin on the lake, I think that's great. And I don't think of them as aesthetically unpleasant. You know, I don't think boats on the driveway are a terrible thing to look at. I appreciate people, you know, writing in saying that they think it's an eyesore, but I think this is Minnesota. I think, you know, for the most part, I think we're pretty tolerant of boaters and boating. We got a lot of emails about property value going down. I really don't see that being the case. I don't know if there's any studies showing that. I could see how people might not want to move to Chan Hessen because they can't park their boat on the driveway, so I think it's a wash. And I think we're a living, breathing, active community, so I think the idea of having access to a boat on your driveway makes sense. And granted, you know, I would love to be able to make it so the neighbors are happy with the boat next door, and I'm sure the neighbors will hopefully work together on, you know, making it more pleasant for each other. But I think in terms of an ordinance, I think it makes sense to allow boats here in Chan on the driveway.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Ream. Any other comments? Councilwoman Campion?
All right, I'll share. So some of the thoughts that I had when considering this again, you know, there are a few reasons why I'm supporting the proposed ordinance. One of them is I think it's a reasonable use of your property, especially given Chan Hessen and at least five lakes with public launches, as I count it, and possibly more in the other areas, that, you know, it's reasonable to want to have a boat. I recognize that not everyone does have a boat, but I think they should have the opportunity if they did purchase one to store it on their property. I think that the current ordinance that's in force, you know, that allows for the storage on the side, I think that that's more of an eyesore personally. If my neighbor had a boat stored between our houses, you know, that'd still be visible from the street. I would rather have them on the driveway. Also considering that, you know, our neighboring cities, all of the neighboring cities that surround Chan Hessen, allow for the parking of boats in the driveways, at least in the summer. And then, at the same time that I believe all that, I think it's perfectly within the right of a homeowners association to restrict the parking of boats. I think it's easier within a homeowners association to gain the consensus or gauge the consensus of the homeowners. And so if individuals really don't like the look of boats, you know, they could organize their own homeowners association or move into one that has the rules that restrict parking of boats. Also, you know, I've cited the last time that this topic came up, that I don't think that we're enforcing that ordinance over the past, that it's just difficult to enforce. Through my travels through the city, in the summer months, I often see, you know, boats parked in driveways, and it just depends on who your neighbor is, and if they're, you know, someone, if someone's gonna call on you or not. And so for those reasons, I'm supportive of the ordinance proposed.
Thank you, Councilwoman Campion. Anyone else?
I will just kind of reiterate a lot of what Councilmember Campion said. My, I read every single email that was sent, and I pondered it a lot, and I think I actually swayed a little more this time around than I did last time around. But it comes back, for me personally, to the people I have talked to, you know, reasonable use of your own personal property, and the fact that we do have a lot of HOAs that are allowed to make their own rules for those residents that live in them. There's plenty of residents that choose not to live in HOA to have greater reasonable use of their own properties. And again, we are Minnesota. We are the land of ten thousand lakes, and there are so many people that like to enjoy our lakes, and I want, I don't want to detract and not make it as possible for people to enjoy the lakes on a regular basis. There are plenty of lots that I drive by that parking on the side or in the back is not feasible with how the lots are laid out and whatnot as well in town. So for a lot of those, a lot of people in town, they don't even have the ability to park alongside their house or in the backyard either.
Thank you. Councilwoman McDonald?
Well, I guess I'll start off by saying that, you know, I voted against this when it was up before, and I've not heard anything that would say that a boat owner has any kind of a hardship that someone that owns a camper also doesn't have. You talk about the reason is because we have lakes and everyone should have boats. Well, people have campers and we have campgrounds around lakes, so they should be able to have campers also. I believe that what we passed before was the right approach for all of this. I think even by looking at the emails, and I read them all also, and it's, it's the same arguments. Like I say, nothing has really changed. So, I mean, at this point, I feel that we have not done anything to show that boaters are a more put upon class than what anyone else is. So I think that when we pass this, it is very unfair to other residents within the community, and, you know, therefore, I would not support it.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. My, I voted against it the previous time. I'm still against it, similar to Councilwoman McDonald's comments. Let's see here, so a lot of the, the different things in terms of the emails that we received are property rights, the cost associated with boat storage, you know, how we should allow it, whether it's tastefully done, or it doesn't look like a dumpster, or some of those things, which is, you know, very subjective to be able to manage that. And then enforcement, in terms of property rights, you know, we have ordinances and codes in place today for the very reason of the betterment of the neighborhood and the community, whether it's bringing garbage cans, we have setbacks, you can't build fences anywhere, we have noise ordinances, and it's really about the betterment of the neighborhood as, in the community at large. And, and so I do not believe that it's an infringement on people's property rights to ask them to store it in the side or the back of their yard. I think of a lot of the homes that were built before, there were homeowners associations, so they have the ability to lean on homeowners associations. The people that don't, and if they have smaller lots, now you have, you know, your house in close proximity, and you have boats of any size. We put no restrictions on size. It just can't hang over the edge. So now we're talking any size boat can be in the driveway of these, of lot, doesn't matter the lot size. I think that is very burdensome to neighbors. The cost, I don't think that's the city's responsibility. When you bought your house or bought your boat, you knew or came to know the situation that was, the ordinance that was in, already in place in Chan Hessen. Nothing has changed. You just chose to, you know, buy your boat or your house with the ordinance as it is. And so I, as I said the last time, if it would have been reversed and we were adding this ordinance to something that already existed, I can see the frustration, but this ordinance has been in place for thirty-plus years. And really, finally, with enforcement, I just, I disagree with, because it isn't enforced across the board, then we should change the ordinance. I think we should look at the enforcement, and should we do something else when it comes to enforcement of, you know, any type of complaints? So if, if we want to have a, you know, a city that enforces our code violations, you know, more aggressively, then I think that's the decision of a council to reevaluate that. I think the, the idea that we talk summer months and we are having this ordinance in place from April to October is absurd. That is absolutely, any Minnesotan knows that is not summer here. That is absolutely, any Minnesotan knows that is not summer here. We still have road restrictions on in April, it is snowing, and now we have, you know, boats that are in driveways for the majority of the year, even though I think we all know that, you know, it's, those aren't our summer months. So it'd be, I think that timeline is, is very aggressive, and I agree, I mean, I am opposed to all storage, but I don't know how we can, as a Council, say, yes, we should allow boats, but, you know, not trailers or campers. And I just, I think we are, we are just setting this up for what's next. I mean, why then sleds, and, I mean, the list goes on. So I just think we're, we're opening up a situation that we, you know, we're not prepared for. So I, I will be voting against this, this ordinance change. Let me ask Council, obviously there's three people that are Councilmembers that are in favor of moving this forward. Is there any potential to change the, the dates to Memorial Day to Labor Day versus in April to October? Is there any flexibility there as people are now going to be having this situation? I know people take their, you know, their boats and whatnot out of storage, and I know there's costs associated with that, but we are making a significant change to people's lives, and to all of a sudden have it be April through October seems very lengthy, so. All right, well, then there's a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Councilwoman Campion?
I move that the Chan-Hassan City Council approves the proposed amendment to Sections 1-2 and 20-909 of the Chan-Hassan City Code concerning the outdoor storage of watercraft on residential properties, between April 1st and October 1st.
All right, we have a valid motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ream. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
That motion carries 3-2. Are there any Council presentations tonight?
Well, I guess, Madam Mayor, I'll make the comment that on Friday night, we had the Chan-Hassan Annual Fire Dinner, and I think everything went quite well. We announced the Fireman of the Year and gave away numerous awards for firemen who are retiring. It's always interesting to attend these. We have a number of people that have, you know, they've got 20-plus years' experience working on the fire department here, and it's just the professionalism and the enthusiasm that the firemen have, you know, for their jobs, it always amazes me and makes me quite proud of the fire department. I think they really love their job, so I always enjoy attending these things.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. And it was, the theme for the night was superheroes night, and I think we all agree, they definitely are superheroes. So it was a, it was a great night, and I appreciate everybody, you know, from Council and staff, that Councilwoman McDonald and Lori and Ari for being there on Friday night. Councilwoman Schubert, would you like to say anything about Arbor Day?
Yeah, yeah, I had the honor of being there for Arbor Day, and the Councilmember Ream was there as well, helping out. And just big thank you and shout out to the Boy Scout troops and the Girl Scout troops that were there helping out, and all the residents. We got a lot of trees planted, and I think everyone learned something new that day. And Jill Sinclair is, I know, the city staff that, and all of the parks, and, you know, we had our night tonight, and a lot of good work from the Public Works and Park Department in prepping and getting that all together, it was a really fun event.
Great, thank you for being there, appreciate it. Any other Council presentations? Anything administratively?
No, ma'am.
Any questions on the correspondence? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Campion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That motion carries 5-0.